All right, good evening. We will call the meeting to order. This is the April 21st, 2025, meeting of the Williamson County Board of Education. Board members, we will begin by recording attendance. Please do so on your devices. I could hear it, but I'm not sure everyone else could.
There are 11 members present.
Thank you. All right, we will now do our Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. The pledge will be led by Grayson Beasley.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Next item on our agenda is items of particular public interest, which is our public comment period. We have 17 members of the public who have signed up to speak. Each person will be given a minute and a half, 90 seconds, for your comments. I will call the first two people, and I'll call two at a time, so the second person can be ready. So we'll start with Angela Frederick, followed by Jenny Davis. And the time will be on the screen in front of you, so you can keep track of that.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. Since the last time I spoke at this podium, a lot has been discussed in the community and amongst teachers about your decision to approve a textbook that most teachers didn't vote for in the committee process. I won't belabor the point beyond saying this. It is disappointing that you chose not to reconsider this vote after the mountain of feedback you received. It is also disappointing that several of you chose not to respond to teachers from your districts who contacted you with concerns. I want to emphasize that teachers are professionals trained in their fields who want the best for students. Despite our disappointment in your decision, we will use the STEM Scopes textbooks that you approved. We will ensure that students are taught the science standards laid out by the state of Tennessee. We don't wish for there to be animosity between teachers and school board members. We have the same goal in mind, which is student success. Please work with us and seek our feedback as we move forward into the 25-26 school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny Davis, followed by Hillary King Werthen.
Good evening. I stand before you today in front of all of these people and my two children to tell you a story about the decision you made. Since your vote, an estimated 171 community members have taken the time to email this board, including 81 teachers who work directly with our students every day. Of these communications, an overwhelming 148 individual people, representing 86% of all of the emails received, have expressed opposition to your decision and requested reconsideration. Only 25 people, or 14%, supported your choice. These numbers aren't just statistics. They represent the voices of parents, educators, and community members who care deeply about our students' education. I was particularly troubled to learn that one board member stated, "We finally have a board that is willing to reject recommendations and move forward with the school board plan. Thank God." This comment suggests that rejecting expert recommendations was the goal rather than selecting the best educational materials for our children. A board that takes pride in dismissing the professional judgment of our educators is not serving our community well. When 86% of concerned citizens, including those with classroom expertise, oppose your decision, I urge you to listen, reconsider, and demonstrate that you value both community input and educational expertise. Thank you.
Okay. The next speaker after Ms. Werthen is Reagan Grossman.
Okay. Hi, my name is Hillary King Werthen. I'm a licensed marriage and family therapist, as well as a mom of two. I actually attended Williamson County Public Schools from elementary through high school. I have to say I am discouraged and alarmed to hear that we have school board members claiming to know the values of the majority in Williamson County and using that and using that implied value system to vote against teacher-recommended textbooks and curriculum. Tonight, as we discuss AP Psychology text, I feel very compelled to share due to my background and life experience. For members of this board to imply that textbooks touching on important topics such as LGBTQ+ populations do not reflect our values in Williamson County is a large misstatement. We have over 200,000 Tennessee residents who identify as part of the LGBTQ+ population. This number continues to rise each year. Roughly fifty percent of those who identify in this population suffer from depression and anxiety, with LGBTQ+ young people four times more likely to attempt suicide than their peers. Did you know that LGBTQ young people who found their school to be affirming reported significantly lower rates of attempting and/or completing suicide? The comments and broader decisions being made about certain topics such as these going against values in Williamson County is sending a grim message to youth and their families who are trusting this community, trusting schools and teachers, to be a protective factor for their children. Should I stop?
Please.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Reagan Grossman, followed by Kim Harris.
I think there's gonna be a theme today. Hi, my name is Reagan Grossman. I was born and raised in Franklin, Tennessee. As a matter of fact, I was born in this building that we're in. I graduated from Franklin High School, and both of my parents are Williamson County school teachers. One retired and one currently. We all know that we have a fabulous school system. According to the Tennessee Department of Education, we have the highest T-CAP scores in the state. We have the highest composite ACT score in the state. We had eighty-five Merit Scholarship finalists this year. Tennessee's public school system in Williamson County has been the crown jewel as long as I've been alive. And if anybody asks me why that is, I can give them 2,363 excellent reasons why. We have 2,363 teachers in our school system. They break their backs every day to educate our youth. My father, who teaches AP-level courses, he takes time before school, after school, even on the weekends, to make sure these kids are successful. And he is one of many teachers that do this. So my ask of this board is to trust these teachers. If they make a recommendation to you, take it. Uphold what's written in your own Williamson County School Board education philosophy that says, and I quote, "to request the advice and support of the citizens of the community and the professional staff." In a time when coming together is so important, I ask you guys to please support our teachers and be a benefit, not a barrier.
Kim Harris, followed by Sarah Robinson.
Good evening. As a parent of a child in a Williamson County public school, I've been deeply interested in the process of selecting a new textbook since I learned about it last fall from an email from my kid's school. So first of all, I want to thank the committee that spent so many hours and so much of their energy reviewing and reading material to make a recommendation. What a privilege it is that we live in a community where teachers, parents, school board members, community members care so deeply about the future of education in our community. And part of that care is demonstrated in an oath that all of the voting members took before participating and weighing in on a recommendation. The oath reads as follows. "I do hereby declare that I am not now directly or indirectly financially interested in or employed by any textbook publisher or agency, and that I will not become directly or indirectly financially interested in any of the proposed contracts, nor in any book, nor in any publishing concern handling or offering any books of other publications to the committee of which I am a member for the listing and adoption. And I do hereby promise that I'll act honestly, faithfully, and conscientiously, and in all respects will discharge my duty as a member of the committee to the best of my skill and ability. As we move forward with this selection, as well as any other textbook selections that come forward, I would like to request that all members of the committee, both voting and non-voting board members, are asked to sign and commit to this oath. Given that the non-voting board member of this committee made the recommendation to diverge from the rest of the committee's selection in favor of the textbook ultimately selected, we should ensure that the utmost ethical practices are followed and have that board member sign the oath, as all of the other committee members did. Thank you."
Sarah Robinson, followed by Toni Cotto.
I thought I would have three minutes, so I apologize for speaking really fast. Hello, my name is Sarah Robinson. I was born and raised in Franklin, grew up going to Williamson County Schools, and currently an elementary librarian in the district. I am here to voice my concerns for the changes to policy 4.403 pertaining to the addition of the mature materials list. I want to start out by saying thank you to Donna Clements for meeting with me last week to discuss the policy and my concerns. I wanted to remind the board and the public of the things that WCS already has in place. We've always worked to have age-appropriate books in our libraries. Our library collections are posted on each of our schools' websites. There is also a policy in place for parents to inform the librarian of the book titles they don't want their child checking out. A few of my concerns are as followed. If this goes into effect July 1st, since librarians are not required to work over the summer as ten-month employees, there will not be a list for parents to review to make an informed decision for next school year. I ask, if this is passed, to please allow us to have this year to start a list, if any, and then to place it on Skyward next year as an opt-out in order for parents to make an informed decision. Lastly, the wording "mature" is very misleading. It makes it sound like we have R-rated materials in our library. Please allow the librarians to determine a better-suited word. As WCS educators, we strive on not only building relationships with students, but with families. There is and will always be open communication and transparency between us and our stakeholders. Our goal as public school librarians is to get books in the hands of our students and foster the love of reading. Thank you for your time.
After Toni Cotto is Ashley Webster.
All right, good evening. I asked to speak today primarily regarding your vote for science textbooks at last month's meeting. Let's be very clear about the facts. The majority of the board decided that your knowledge and judgment are better than that of our professional educators. The fact that you did not seek to understand our teachers' recommendations, or have a rep from the board at all, or even most committee meetings, demonstrates either incompetence or a willful disregard for the committee's recommendations. As I do not choose to believe you are incompetent, it is clear to me that the majority of you very intentionally decided to ignore what our professional educators recommended. And further, you decided to impose your personal and/or partisan ideologies on our students. My ask is simple. Please represent the voices of the vast majority of Williamson County parents. Please work to seek out our voices, not only those of a very small but loud minority groups. We do not want you to ignore the recommendations of our professional educators. We do not want you to tell our librarians how to do their jobs or to ban more books. We do not want you to make more books harder to read by imposing opt-in requirements for selected books instead of allowing opt-out options for the minority of parents who want to limit access to books for their kids. Instead, we want you to show trust and respect for our teachers, our professional educators, by listening to and showing proper deference to their recommendations. And we want you to trust our librarians to do their jobs and to let our kids read books that teach them about the diverse world that we live in. Thank you for listening.
Is Ashley Webster here? Okay, we'll move to Amy Cook, followed by Vivian Cook.
So, so far, we're at 100%, because we have two more coming in with the same agreement. But I'm actually here today to talk about the fine arts for elementary school this time. So I thank you guys so much for all your attention for the middle school fine arts. And now I want to just focus on the elementary. So this year, my daughter has had the opportunity to be in a school play, Willy Wonka, and she's on the yearbook staff, the run club, and inspire crew. And lastly, the choir that y'all heard today. Sorry, I'm loud. And I just want to say, we have the best teachers in the world, and they just don't get paid what they're supposed to get paid. So I'm just gonna go off script, because I only have forty-eight seconds left, but Ms. Napier, she is the most amazing human. She's probably your best employee in Williamson County Schools. And she makes about $2 an hour when it's all said and done on the yearbook staff. It is just ridiculous to me that we could have middle school and high school yearbook staff making more than the elementary kids, who, Vivian's great, but she's not gonna be able to do all the different things that the high school students could do on the yearbook, yet they get paid the least amount. I don't think that's fair. But I also want to say, most importantly, our teachers, they did not have to sit on that committee. They did not have to review those books. They did that because they know the best interest of our kids. And I have two middle schoolers now that are gonna be taught from a curriculum that none of my kids' teachers wanted to speak on. So, thank you.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Vivian Cook, and I'm a fourth grader at Muck Creek Elementary School. First, I want to say thank you for all the support for your fine arts supplements for middle school teachers. Now I need to talk to you guys about the elementary school. This year, I had the incredible opportunity to be in the school play, Willy Wonka. I'm also in the yearbook staff, in the run club, and inspire crew, and lastly, the choir. I have the best teachers in the world, and they put in so much time. They do so much for our school, and I want to make sure they are treated like superheroes they are. I know firsthand how much time I spend participating in these activities. And I know they spend almost the same amount of time, if not more, outside the time they spend with us to prepare. For instance, I've spent approximately twenty hours for the yearbook, but our director has spent up 574 hours and come to all of our school events, which is a lot of time. This equals $2 an hour. That's not okay. I also hope that you will listen to our teachers when they are on committees, because they know what's best for us. They inspire us every day, and it's important that they feel supported. We trust our teachers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. The next two, Carrie Barnard and Genevieve Pejos.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Carrie Barnard. I am a resident of Franklin and mother of two school-aged children. My husband and I moved our family to Williamson County for the impressive public school six years ago. We have grown increasingly concerned with the school board's actions as of late. Last month, in an entirely unprecedented move, the majority of you voted to override the science textbook selection for our K-8 students. I would like to thank Eric Welch and Melissa Wyatt for voting with our teachers, and ultimately, for the students. While I recognize that many of you have teaching experience and advanced degrees, not a single one of you is currently teaching in the classroom. I find it astonishing that after learning that the Science Textbook Committee, which I would add is significantly larger and arguably more qualified, came to a different decision than some of the school board members, that many of you continued with your vote. Our teachers are fantastic, and the decision to override what they view as the best way to help our children to succeed is irresponsible, and I urge you to reconsider your vote. Not only did many of you vote against our teachers, you also ignored Williamson County School's leadership. To quote Dave Allen, "Curriculum having additional technology resources doesn't mean that it doesn't have the resources without the instructional technology." The most telling data in this entire discussion is that our middle school teachers, who only teach science, not a single one, reference STEMScope science as their choice. Your vote to replace the teachers' top recommendation with their least recommended text is a slap in the face to the teachers of this district. In closing, I urge you to reconsider your vote. Your decision will have lasting consequences on teacher and staff morale in our schools.
Hello. My vibe is gonna be a little bit different up here, but all right. First, Tennessee State Standards, schools must teach students to develop explanations that are based on evidence and free from bias, as well as consider trade-offs among possible solutions when making decisions about issues for which there are competing alternatives. While we actually do support the decision on STEMScopes, because I thought we all wanted less screen time for our kids and to pick a curriculum that was actually proven successful, and I know our people aren't here, but trust me, there are a lot of people that also support that decision to reduce screen time for our kids, all right? What we are concerned about a bit is the extreme bias that was in all of the curriculum that was available to choose from. Examples of that would be: global warming is a fact. All green energy is good, all fossil fuels are bad. Evolution with no possibility of intelligent design. All vaccines, including mRNA, safe and effective. Human impact on environment and population growth inherently bad. Eating meat, bad, with no discussion of sustainable farming. Gender ideology promoted. We are not asking that these topics not be a part of the curriculum, but that the competing alternative is also presented. The only way that we'll be able to do that is through supplemental materials. Our goal is to ensure that these materials that counter the extreme bias taught in our classrooms make it there. We should be encouraging a love for science and not creating activists for globalism. With the President's recent executive order, ending radical indoctrination in K-12 schooling, we believe this falls in line with federal guidelines as well as state standards. Thank you. Oh, don't be rude.
Let's please, let's please respect every speaker. The next two speakers, Robert Jackson and Emily Paisley.
Thank you, Chairman, members, and Superintendent Golden. My name is Robert Jackson, and I'm a teacher of United States history and economics at Centennial High School. I am here today to speak in favor of what has we have done since 1982, but has recently somehow, at the state legislature, come up for question again. Our Fourteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution is absolutely clear that all persons are entitled to equal protection of the law. It's not yet before you, and I hope it never comes before you. But should the state pass this measure, which would give school boards the ability to ban a child or charge tuition because of a decision that their parent made when they were just a little kid, to bring them here, and now they are undocumented, that is unconstitutional, it's immoral, and it's against our traditions. If a teacher were to punish a student tomorrow because of what they thought that their parent did that night before, you would fire that teacher. In the same, our state should not punish students for what their parents did. And I hope that question never comes before you, and I hope the state does not pass that measure. Good night.
Is Emily Paisley here? After Emily, we'll have Otis Hallbright.
Hello, board. Emily Paisley here. I'm here to discuss the 4.403 policy review request. First, I think that all the library material points probably need to be tabled or continued. There's a lot of information there to go over and divulge. But most importantly, well, not most importantly, but one of the things is when filing complaints about library materials, it is already established in 2022 that it was unnecessary to include all 265,000 residents of Williamson County as potential participants to file a complaint about a library book. Okay? I understand about taxes and everything, I get that. Taxpayers, I'm a taxpayer. Our school faculty and employees are already bombarded with the complaints from people who actually are connected to the schools. This request is a mere attempt to open the floodgates for a political campaign to modify and mold learning materials into something that should be offered at selected private schools or homeschool programs, not in our public schools. Which brings me to the 2025 adoption of the AP Psychology materials. It is my hope that this time, the board will acknowledge the time, effort, and intellect that has gone into the selection of the committee members. This is a college course with college-age material. There is no basis to limit or change the suggested materials, which provide the necessary knowledge required to obtain a psychology degree. Okay? Know that. You have to have this information to get a psychology degree, like my son is getting from the AP course he took.
Time, thank you.
The problem with going this late is everybody takes your stuff, which is really rude. Like, I had a list. Okay, so, real quick, I'm Otis Hallbright. I'm the one who sends you the really long emails with the cited links. I'm the one who sends you the really long emails with the cited links for ease of use and junk like that. I was on the site textbook committee. It was unanimous, and the reason was frankly simple, as most of you read. It's the only one that aligns with the national standard, the new exam. It changed, that's why we're having to do it on an accelerated pace. That's why it's 8-0. It's frankly not that interesting. This is the same book I used in 2009, okay? During the Bush administration, when I first tried to register and I had to get waitlisted as a senior. It is very old, it is not that interesting. Several of you have responded back to me. It's not that complicated. A lot of y'all are concerned allegedly about some community values, which is representative. There are some currently a minority, but it is what it is. I would remind you that the state has already got a law on these alleged controversial things they have to opt in. Over the two or three years, I think I've had less than five kids opt out, out of a couple hundred, not exactly a large amount. Wilson County is currently referencing us in a kind of negative way. I don't want to be beat by Wilson County, like we're Williamson County, we win, we're the better W county. And if you need help on parliamentary procedure, I noticed a bunch of y'all talked about that. I do YIG, one of my other YIG people is in here. If you need the motion to reconsider the question, I have Dr. Jones from Vanderbilt. He, when he died, seeded me his Robert's Rules of Order, and I'm happy to give it to you. Let me know if y'all need anything. Thank you.
Our last two, last two speakers, Carolyn Brown and Becca Ripley.
I wanted to thank you for providing some transparency in the curriculum review process. It sounds as though there's a step missing where the Board could talk more with the committee that made the decision, you know, the teachers' recommendations, because there's a disconnect there. However, this process also needs to be improved because curriculum decisions are costly, that necessitate a multi-year commitment, and should allow for an enhanced communication during the public review process. This year's curriculum contains materials that are no longer being pushed, such as gender theory and dire effects of climate change. Instead, a common sense approach, where differing scientific theories and opinions are encouraged to be tested and discussed. The new science and psychology curriculum ought to reflect this approach. Recent data shows, appears to show that anxiety and depression in our youth is skyrocketing. Gender dysphoria, neurodivergence, and eco-anxiety, which is a new term I just learned about, are common concerns being addressed by clinicians and teachers in our classrooms. For example, The Lancet, Volume 5, Issue 12, states, "As a research team, we were disturbed by the scale of emotional and psychological effects of climate change upon children of the world. The number who reported feeling hopeless and frightened about the future of humanity. We wish that these results had not been quite so devastating." I would encourage you to implement supplemental materials that are optimistic.
Thank you. Becca Ripley, our final speaker.
Well, first, I didn't, just because I didn't sign up to speak about the ongoing textbook stuff, I just want to, because we got a minute 30 tonight, say thank you to all my fellow speakers tonight for spelling out what the vast, vast majority of all of us, parents, employees, et cetera, are feeling about how things went. So, thanks, everybody, for saying that for me. I am a parent of two WCS students, and I'm here out of concern about the repercussions of HB 793 and SP 836, which seek to disenroll students without acceptable residential documentation. I respectfully request that y'all adopt a resolution or otherwise proclaim that you will not eject students from our Williamson County schools or charge them tuition if this bill becomes law, which obviously, we hope it doesn't. Undocumented Tennesseans pay over $900 million in taxes. Disenrolling an undocumented student is not going to result in any decrease in funding for our LAIA. But then they can turn around and charge the disenrolled student $7,000 to readmit them to what was once a free education to which they were entitled. Oh, it went really fast. So, all students do have a right to free and appropriate public education, and it would be a devastating mistake not to show continued support for all students. How can we teach our students the importance of kindness, acceptance, and inclusion if adults in leadership position promote hate and divisiveness? This is the time to show our community demonstrably believes in unity and compassion and education.
Thank you. All right, I want to say thank you to all of our speakers, especially to Vivian. Thank you for your courage in speaking to us. All right, we will move on with the remainder of our agenda. The next item is to approve the agenda for this evening. Can I get a motion in a second? We'll do this by voice vote. It's already there. Okay, we got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Next item is approval of the consent agenda. We'll handle this the same way. You see the items listed on the consent agenda. Any, can I get a motion in a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. And with that vote, let me read off the items that are approved as part of the consent agenda. Approval of the March 17, 2025 school board meeting minutes. Board policy for second reading, 4.206 homebound instructions. Approval of facilities use fee schedule. Approval to replace casework in the reception area at Crockett Elementary. Approval to replace basketball lockers at Fairview High. Approval of Mill Creek Middle softball storage shed. Approval to replace the monument sign at Oak View Elementary. Approval to install a lighted sign on the weight room at Page High. Approval to install exterior lights at Page High. Approval to install wechers at Ravenwood High. And the recommendation for field trip fee requests. Next item on the agenda, communications to the Board. Superintendent's report, Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to reiterate what you shared in thanking our public speakers. There's a lot of value every month in hearing from our public speakers and the diverse thoughts that they have in our community. And I'm going to reiterate what you mentioned regarding Vivian and her sharing with us. Vivian and some of her classmates actually sang before the board meeting, and we don't actually start the broadcast while we have those student productions, but very much thank our students and the excellent job they did. With that, we are in late April, and this is a time for testing, time for TCAP, time for end-of-course tests, and the AP courses are coming in just a little bit. And that is a big deal, but I want to mention to you all as a board and the audience, one of those items that I mentioned at the work session, which is really just some specific comments about our excellent teachers. And you all, as a board, know that when we have these conversations, we talk about our teachers knowing the standards and knowing those standards in depth and having the capacity to work together as teams to teach those standards and the complexity of those standards. And when we talk about testing, we don't panic and worry ourselves when it's time for testing, because our teachers have been doing that work all year and preparing our students. And more especially, we've been focusing on student learning rather than teaching. In other words, when teachers present an excellent lesson and the students, not every single student understood that standard, they're going to spiral back. They're going to make sure that those students have that opportunity to learn, especially those standards that they're going to need to build on as they grow. And I just gave you a very, very short synopsis of Williamson County's success right there, the combination of our teachers and our students working together. So, thank you, parents, for coming to Williamson County because of that excellent reputation, but we know it's more than reputation. It takes that constant effort every day by our students. Related to that, this is also a time of the year for celebrations. And tomorrow night, I wanted to remind everyone and on the Board, we are having our Shining Apple Awards, which is our thank you to our Volunteers of the Year from each school. Each one of our schools selects a Volunteer of the Year. And I'm going to mention something that I typically mention at our Shining Apple Awards. I usually tell the volunteers who are in the audience an approximate amount of dollar value that we get from our volunteer work. And it's incredible, and I'll mention that tomorrow night, at least as close as we can get right now, Rachel, without actually receiving those financials yet this year. But I'll say something along these lines, but we can't measure the time. We can't measure the effort of our volunteers, of our parents and our grandparents and our corporate support, with that, what accountants call in-kind support, to help us be successful. We could not be as successful as we are without the help of our volunteers. In addition to that celebration tomorrow night, of course, graduation is coming up in a month, and I know you all, as Board members, have committed to those opportunities you have to attend those graduation ceremonies. It's a practical impossibility for us to be at every single one, but those are great times. Also, next week, we have a thank you scheduled to our graduating seniors who have committed to the U.S. Military. And I felt like it was worth mentioning this again from our work session. Last year, we were notified by 36 of our graduates that they had committed to the U.S. Military. This year, so far, we're aware of 39. Based on the data that we've seen nationally, and the percentage of our students who are committing to the U.S. Military, we are operating at about twice the national average of our students committing to the U.S. Military. The military itself is substantially less than 1% of our total population in this country. The World War II is the most modern example of the highest percentage, but now it is substantially lower. And it reminds me of that old quote from Winston Churchill in a different context. Never have so many been thankful to so few. And I'm grossly violating his quote. And so, I would encourage you to look that up if you don't recognize the way I butchered that quote. Winston Churchill actually had one American parent and one English parent. Never in the course of human history have so many, oh, something like that. But we have a very few number of Americans protecting us in that substantial ways. We very much appreciate those folks, and again, we will be thanking our students for that commitment to take care of us here at home. With that, I want to transition to some more celebrations that are coming. Carol Birdsong, every month, shares with us state and national awards for our students and our faculty, and Carol will now share that with us for April.
Superintendent Golden and school board member, spring is certainly a time for celebration, especially here in Williamson County schools. So, we have a lot to celebrate, and a lot of it this month is based on the performances of our career and technical education students and through their student organizations. So, not many times are we able to honor our middle school students, because they don't have that many opportunities to compete at the state level. But let me tell you about Page Middle School and the Tennessee State Future Farmers of America. They have been named the State Superior Chapter under the guidance of Tommy Green out there. And then, we have the Agronomy State Champions, Sebastian Agrazo, Parker Darnell, Preston Lauder, and Luke Mundie, and the high-scoring individual in the state for FFA Junior High Agronomy, Sebastian Agrazo, again. And we have the state champions at Page Middle of the quiz, and these are your quiz team members. Harper Green, Killian Carey, Toa Lamota, and Jack Paiva. And high-scoring individual in the state, quiz winner, Harper Green. So, now, we're going to go across the road to Page High School. And their advisor is Shanna Botler, and they have been named the state Superior Chapter for the state of Tennessee, FFA. And then, FFA state degrees, y'all. This is the highest achievement you can get at the state level, and these students earned it. Kenzie Anderson, Seela Castro, Aiden Flott, Jeremiah McDonald, and Greer Quick. FFA state champion in poultry production proficiency, yes, that is alliteration, Abigail Bernie. All right, now, we're going to go to DECA, the Distributive Education Clubs of America. And guess what? The Brentwood High School Chapter, DECA Chapter, under the direction of Lisa Montgomery, is the chapter of the year. Also, in duo in individual awards, Callie Constantine and Elena Fields, earned first-place in entrepreneurship team decision-making. Allison Hulsele, Hotel and Lodging Management Series. Lucy Wyatt, I believe you all might know her, in Human Resources and Management Series. And then, we have Anna Riley in Marketing Communication Series. We have Mikael Jacobson in Personal Finance Literacy. Nicholas LaMasters, Principles of Entrepreneurship. From Franklin High School in DECA, we have Taylor Grant and Dorsa Tahiri. In first in role-play for Financial Services Team Decision-Making, Justin Anderson is their advisor. Izzy Bitterman and Catherine Riva David Vida, first in role-play for Hospitality and Tourism, Professional Selling. Also, from Franklin High School, Madeline Karakow, first in role-play for Principles of Business Management and Administration. Did Williamson County schools win everything there? It does seem like it. Over at Page High School, in the DECA competition, Chloe Lee and Mahi Nandri, Integrated Marketing Campaign Service. Page High School, again, Sam Ross, Retail Merchandising Series. Did I mention Tristan Brown is their advisor? If I didn't, I did, and if I did, I did it again. So, we're going to go to Ravenwood High School. This is Shirinat Narahandi, Adia Pradeep, Kosheek Satheen Kumar, and they are your Business Growth Plan winners. Their instructors are Brian Stuck and Jennifer Doak. In the category of Business Finance Series, Hanska Donna Dula and Vivon Rakyanli. And in Business Services, Marketing Services, Janvi Vasita. And in Business Solutions Project, Akash Ashwin, Viha Bhushan, and Sean Humar. And also, continuing on from Ravenwood, in Buying and Merchandising Operations Research, Rohan Kilaru, Shrikar Kusimancha, and, whoops, sorry, flipped too fast, Chidan Yingala. And then, in Entrepreneurship Series, Anya Dig. And now, one more from Ravenwood, a couple more from Ravenwood, actually. Financial Literacy Project, Sasha Kumar and Samuel Michael. In Integrated Marketing Campaign Event, you see what I mean about, I think we won every one. Manu Sri, Klasikam, Ashley Gavala, and Savannah Pointner. And in International Business Plan, Ishan Khanna, Arno Mada, and Young Patel. And in Quick Serve Restaurant Management Series, Ariyan Chatanya. And now, in Health Occupation Science Association, this is a tricky word for me, folks, pathophysiology. Joshua Fine, Franklin High School, I hope that was correct. Emily, I'm not even sure what that is, but- Emily, I'm not even sure what that is, but Emily Orbison is the instructor there, and I'm sure she has taught Joshua Fine quite well. So, in Medical Spelling, we have Tom Spurle. And in Pharmacy Science, we have Liam Witkop, all from Franklin High School. Then we go to Page High School, and this is Sophia Smith, who earned first place in Behavioral Health. And the Page advisor is Sarah Stetzenko. And then in Dental Technology, we have Arushi Montori. In Clinical Specialty, we have Lily Espella. And also from Page High, in Clinical Nursing, we have Ella Orangina. And in Biomedical Debate, Aslan White, Monica Koshik, Ally Hamilton, and Bailey Witt. Over at Ravenwood High School in HOSA, Health Informatics, we have Sean Kumar. Michael Gerlock is the advisor there. Now, we're moving on to something that I absolutely love, and that is the National Speech and Debate Association. State Champion winners, and they will go on also to the national competition. All of the career and technical students also get to go on to national competition over the summer. But this is Wally Sidar and Joseph Johnson, Brentwood High School. They won in public forum debate. Their coach is Matt Grimes. From Nolansville High School, Jonathan O'Care. Their coach, oh, won in Congressional Debate, coaches Brandy Weaver and Eve Farrell. This is Armin Small from Summit High School, won in Lincoln Douglas Debate. Christina Crutcher is the coach at Summit. Another thing I love is the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences, and here are your state, actually state and regional winners. And this is Sophia Andrews from Brentwood High School, won in two categories, y'all. Best Fiction and Best Photographer. And they compete not only in the state of Tennessee, but several, a couple of other states as well. Sloan Ashworth is Sophia's teacher and also David's teacher. And David won in Best Animation and Special Effects. At Franklin High School, Vashe Rubenoff, won for Best Commercial. And Carrie Thompson is the teacher over at Franklin. At Fairview High School, Annika Crowe and Asaya Brown, won for Best Public Service Announcement. Rob Gregory is their teacher. For Best Editor, Garrett Pavelor at Independence, Matt Balzer is the teacher at Indy. And for Best Nonfiction, Kayden Powers at Page High School, Dave Holt is their teacher. And you thought we were done, but we are not. Because we have won first place in the State Science Bowl, y'all. This is Ravenwood High School's team, Gabrielle Lasada, Alexandra Jenna Colas, William Ryland Hoskins, Aiden Young, and Bryn Young. And then, as far as student spotlight's go, this is Shayla Carrera from Franklin High School. And she won the Tennessee Association of School Librarians Bookmark Contest for the State. So, we are just well-represented all over the place. So now, we have a few staff members that we want to recognize. This was Matt Grimes, and he's over at Brentwood High School. And he was named the Tennessee District National Speech and Debate Association Assistant Coach of the Year. And then in Sports, this has been out there a minute, but it's time that we recognize, as the board, Will Hesser. I know Will appreciates the photo, showing him in his true form. He was named the 6A Head Coach of the Year from the Tennessee Football Coaches Association. Will's over at Ravenwood. And then Sean Tippel, from Page High School, won the 5A Assistant Coach of the Year from the Tennessee Football Coaches Association. Woo, y'all, I'm done. Congratulations to everybody.
Thank you, Carol. And Mr. Chair, I do want to thank a number of our principals who are here tonight. Josiah Holland, Robert Boer, Julie Sparrow, Drew Perry, Trent Satterfield, Chris Butler, Jen Schwartz, Pam Vaden, Amanda Fuller, Paula Waits, Lynn Sawyer, Katie Hill, Shane Pantal, Shelley Kofol, and Sarah Lamb. Thank you all for your commitment to your students.
May even better to say which one they're not here.
That is my report.
Okay, thank you. And congratulations to all of those who were recognized tonight. Okay, we will move on to a board chair report. The only thing I'm going to mention is what I mentioned at the work session on Thursday, which is, and this is mostly for the benefit of the community, those who are here and listening, the, Jason and I have decided to form a Technology Screen Time Committee. We'll be rolling that out, starting hopefully with our first meeting in May, to look at issues surrounding how we're using technology in the district, use of personal devices, cell phones, et cetera, screen time, all those things that members of the community and the public have been raising as concerns, and members of the board have been raising as concerns. So, that committee will be made up of parents, members of the administration, teachers, faculty. So it'll be a well-rounded, well-balanced committee that will get input from a cross-section of our stakeholders. So more to come on that. All right, we'll move on to unfinished business. And this is the approval of the AP Psychology Textbook Adoption Committee's recommendation. Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the unfinished business item from last month, and I want to especially thank Dr. Allen and Ashley Flood for a really good presentation with a great detail at our work session, especially related to the changes in the AP test for this particular course and the formatting of the particular textbook that is the recommendation, the textbook committee, which is the Myers textbook. So, I just wanted to make sure you all just had that reminder. Certainly open any discussion you may have related to that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, so the floor is open for discussion, questions, comments. All right, I see none, and I'm taking it, Mr. Golden, that based on your comments, that you and your team recommend the committee's recommendation.
Yes, sir, I do recommend approval.
Okay, we can proceed to a vote.
The vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Okay, the recommendation is adopted. And thank you to the work of that committee. Item number seven, new business. We have several items that we'll be voting on that are related to the budget. First item is approval of general funds. This is for 2024 or '25, the current budget. Approval of General Fund Amendment, Atmos donation of $4,000. Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a donation from Atmos Energy Corporation to support our literacy volunteer program. Do recommend approval.
Can we get a motion and a second on that? Thank you. Any questions or discussion? All right, let's proceed to a vote.
The vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
That item is approved. Item number two, approval of General Fund Resolution, 05.25 letter grade bonus in the amount of $4 million. Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a letter grade bonus that we've received from the state. We've actually already received it in this budget year, so this is actually a move from one line item to the other for accounting purposes. But I did want to specifically mention that Senator Johnson told you all at your meeting just before the legislative session that he was going to find a way in the current budget year to mitigate some of the impact of the fiscal capacity indicator that nets out to Williamson County Schools, well, Williamson County as a whole, sending more funds to the state than they receive back. So I do recommend approval and thank our legislators for their work.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, we're ready to vote.
The vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
That resolution is approved. Item three, approval of General Fund Resolution 05.25 reclassification due to new account code, $10,119,750. Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, as stated, an accounting change based on the state recoding some items for our instructional coaches. So, that is a required line for accounting purposes. I do recommend approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, we're ready to vote.
The vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Resolution is approved. Item number four, approval of Central Cafeteria Fund Resolution 05.25, Central Cafeteria Excess Fund Balance in the amount of $2,080,927.52. Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the resolution related to excess fund balance, more specifically, the federal rules are that our Central Cafeteria Fund cannot have an account total in excess of three months at the end of its fiscal year. We have actually not raised prices for our school lunches since 2017, 18, if I'm not mistaken, 18, 19. So the intent is to use these funds to do some renovations and some improvement in our cafeterias. Do recommend approval.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Galbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brought up a couple of months ago, and just wanted to ask you to revisit with these excess funds as we have them, an updated POS system and the ability to address the allergens and the notification to outward of our menu items outside of the food line. So, the reason why we have such an excess balance is because our kids buy all the à la carte items. And so that started, and it kind of overfunded everything during, and I figured it out during COVID, when everybody was getting their lunches for free, but we still had these astronomical revenues. And it's because people are buying all of the whole-grain Pop-Tarts and all the other stuff. And none of that, all that stuff shows up as snack on the POS system. If you ever look and see what you paid for, it says snack. And nobody knows what, so a parent has zero visibility in what their kid is buying with their money, that they just swipe, they put in their number, and outcomes of, you know, an endless supply of stuff. And I get that it's not, it's not all, it's like healthy junk food, but it's not, if parents knew what their kids were buying or had the ability to control it, they would, they might do something different with their money. But I really think, especially in light of, you know, having these large amounts of excess funds, I would really appreciate us looking into ways to make that more transparent and just as a safety perspective to keep kids with allergies from being able to consuming something that might be harmful to them. Thanks.
Thank you for that thought, Mr. Galbert. And we are constantly looking for ways to communicate with parents just that little bit better, and we are working on that. There are also, from time to time, some changes at the federal or state level. For example, there's a bill right now related to a particular red dye that's in some foods, et cetera. So we will continue to work on that. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Okay, we're ready to vote.
The vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
That resolution is approved. Item five, approval of capital projects fund, intent to fund, 05.25 asphalt roof and HVAC in the amount of $12,153,000. Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And if I may, items five through eight are related to items that we have on our five-year capital plan that we take to the county commission for maintenance and renovation projects. This particular one, as you mentioned, asphalt roof and HVAC repair. Mr. King gave you some detail of the particular locations where we propose to do those projects. This will, if you all approve, go to the county commission, to the budget committee, and then on up as they analyze all our requests on an annual basis.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, seeing none.
Do recommend approval.
Thank you. We're ready to vote.
The vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
All right, that is approved. Next item, approval of capital projects fund, intent to fund, 05.25 for security technology in the amount of $13,815,425. Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Likewise, security technology requests for our five-year capital plan, that includes items such as taking the next steps for our safety and security with respect to access control, in addition to some cyber technology protections. Do recommend approval.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I think it might be useful if we could ask Mr. King to say again what he said Thursday night about the three-year plan for all the schools being captured in this project.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Thank you.
Just for context.
Mr. King.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, sir. This is part of a three-year project that we have. Actually, it started before that, the outdoor, the access control for all our outside doors, that has been complete. We've started last year into this year, all the inside doors. This year, last year, you approved Phase One. We'll get 15 schools done this year. If this budget passes, we'll do 15 more this coming year, and then the last 15 the following year. So yes, sir, it's a three-year project to get all our schools updated.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, one of the comments that we had at the work session is student safety is an ongoing effort that will never stop, that we will constantly be working on finding ways to improve how we protect our faculty and students in our buildings.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, we're ready to vote.
The vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Okay, that item is approved. Item seven, approval of capital projects fund, intent to fund, 05.25 Hillsborough, K through eight renovation in the amount of $3 million. Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the first step, Mr. King, if I'm not mistaken, on work towards doing some renovations at Hillsborough. It's a number of items to get that started. We do an analysis of our buildings, set priorities building by building, and that's reflected in our five-year capital plan.
All right, we have a motion and a second. And Mr. Cash?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. King, will you give us?
It's an idea for the viewing public. When's the last time, actually, both these schools have been renovated?
Thank you, Mr. Cash, for the question. Yes, sir, Hillsborough was built in 1981, and there's been no renovation. There was one addition of four classrooms that were done, but no renovations. And Grassland was 1986.
Thank you. I think it's time we got busy with these schools.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Okay, we're ready to vote.
The vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
That item is approved. The final budget item for tonight is item eight, approval of capital projects fund, intent to fund, 05.25 Grassland Middle renovation in the amount- of capital projects fund intent to fund 05.25 Grassland Middle renovation in the amount of $1 million. Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Likewise, this is the start-up for the renovations for Grassland Middle. Mr. Cash asked Mr. King the year 1986. It's, that's basically 40 years by the time we get to work on that. And just visualize a building that's 40 years old.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Galbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's our last budget item, and I just wanted to, I just wanted the opportunity to ask Ms., Ms. Farmer if she could, if she could just give us an update of where we are on the, on our budget gap overall.
Sure.
So unrelated to this, but kind of related to the capital project.
Would it, would it be okay if we voted this item and then had that conversation?
That's fine. If we, as long as we can, that's fine.
Yeah, okay. So hold that thought, Ms. Farmer. Any other questions on this particular request? All right, seeing none, we're ready to vote.
The vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
That item is approved. Okay, Mr. Galbert, I'll recognize you again if you had any further questions, or if you want to just go straight to Ms. Farmer. Okay.
As we have left, the last meeting we had was a joint meeting with the county commission budget and education committee. And at that point in time, the gap we had was right at $12 million. That is where we stand today. Next Monday, we will have our next meeting with the education committee, and then on Tuesday, we will have another meeting with the budget committee as a follow-up. At that point in time, we will get more guidance from them as to what their perspective is on what that gap looks like, if that's something that they feel that they can help closing, to close or not. So again, $12 million gap at this point.
When do we expect those four intent to fund items that we just approved to be voted on by the commission?
We're not sure exactly when they might vote, but representatives of the county budget committee asked us to bring these to them just a little bit earlier than we typically do, so they can analyze all those funding requests for the entire year as they're analyzing our operations budget. I will say traditionally, the county commission will fund some of these larger capital projects through, through other funding besides their traditional annual revenue, whether it's by bonds or sometimes fund balance that the county government has. I have, I, it's possible that they might defer some of these to a, to a later time, but they will be voting on our operations budget and our annual capital request. They're scheduled to vote on those in June, if I'm not mistaken, June 20th.
20th.
So I would say June 20th at the earliest, and it's possible some of these capital requests could be voted on a little bit later.
And that raises one more question. When should we expect to be voting on any revisions to the budget prior to them having that final vote?
We would anticipate that next month, after we've met with the budget, the budget and the education committee and get their guidance back to us, then we will come back with, to you with any revision that we feel is needed.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, since, since this, these questions came up, and we talked about this in detail in our work session, but since Mr. Galbert mentioned that, our projections for revenue compared to our projected expenses in that $12 million gap largely represents us paralleling an expense that county government has planned for a pay raise for their staff members. When we started this discussion many months ago, and county government made a proposal for, for pay increases, we knew based on our state revenue that we would need some additional help from county government to actually do that. Our projections include that we do have sufficient funding, or will have sufficient funding in our budget now for the, the step increases that are built into our pay scales for both our teachers and our classified staff. But if we are to give an additional pay raise beyond that, we, we project that we, we will need some additional funding from county government.
All right, anything else before we move on to the next item? Okay, item B, under new business board policy for first reading. This is policy 4.202, child find and special education. Mr. Galbert, do you want to share out from the policy discussion and, and subsequent discussions, and also Ms. Osbrook, if you want to weigh in?
Sure, I'll, I'll start on this one. This is basically the, there's two items with child find and then the new law regarding parent guardian notification, access to certain documents that are reflecting new, updating for new laws. And so, well, the, the second one is a new law. The, the first one is Osbrook's, the child find. I'm not sure that that's new, but we're updating it anyway, right? So, so as long as we're looking at the policy, we kind of did a fresh look and realized that it's a good time to add the, the child find component. The, the last section that's in green, if we can, if we, if we're looking at the, at the, at the document, there was a, there's a proposed section on, on service delivery logs for, for the purposes of this, of this reading. We kind of highlighted, put it, put it in green and parentheses and said, said that we're not, we're not voting to approve this language, but we will, we'll, we'll continue the conversation at our, at our next policy meeting and for, for a vision for, for second reading.
All right, thank you. With that explanation, can I get a motion and a second to get this on the floor for discussion? Thank you. All right, any, any questions or comments on this language on first reading? As has been pointed out, this was discussed in the policy committee and at work session, but we can certainly take up any additional conversation tonight if we need to. Mr. Welch.
I just want to double check. So in the green is not being voted on tonight, you said? Okay, thank you.
It's being moved along to the, to the next policy meeting for further discussion, but not being adopted. Anything else? Any further comments?
I do recommend approval to move this forward for further discussion.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, we will vote on this item on first reading.
The vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
All right, that item is approved on first reading, and we will take it up again at policy meeting in May. Next item is board policy for second reading. You'll recall this was pulled off of the consent agenda at, at the request of a board member. This is policy 4.403 on library materials. Mr. Galbert, Ms. Osbrook, I'll turn it over to you for comments or explanation, and then we can get it on the floor for discussion.
So Dana, if you don't mind, I don't want to, I don't want to leave anything out on, on this one, but.
Okay, for, if we could, oh, it's not on the board. Can we move the library materials policy down on our screen to the?
Forget it.
Right here. Okay. So board members, on the second page, about line 21 through 25, there was some discussion at the work session. And during that discussion, you may recall, I mentioned that there was legal guidance, attorney-client privileged guidance that had been sent to you from Lisa Carson, our litigation attorney, dealing with this specific provision. The question has been asked whether this provision should be removed or whether some other language should be placed instead of this language. As we discussed during the work session, there is a recent, I believe, 2024 U.S. Middle District court case. In that particular case, there was, Knox County was involved, and they were following a state law. They had, however, a provision in their policy that gave them some discretion. And based upon that discretion, they were not victorious in saying, we are simply following state law, therefore, we should have the same immunity that the state of Tennessee has. That, when, when we updated this policy last time, that lane, that case existed, and the language was placed in that, in this policy because of this court case. That court case is still good law. As I mentioned, it is the district that we are in. And so the recommendation of Ms. Carson and myself is that this language remain in the policy as written. The only change that we are recommending is changing the verb become, it was becomes to became.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chair, Ms. Osbrook, you referring to lines 21 through 25 on this particular page?
Yes.
Thank you.
And just for clarity, the, the language in blue, plus the, the two words in red, I believe, there's two individual words in red. Well, let me back up a second. The language in blue is what was adopted on first reading, and is now back before us for second reading. The two, the two words in red are new to this policy since that last, since the first reading.
Since the first reading, yes. I believe we changed, we changed those at a policy meeting. I can't recall if it was during the first one or the second one, but that language was agreed upon. The only, it may have been the first one because at the last policy meeting, we, I made the change, which is an editorial change, down in line 33, mature reading, reading is struck through, and materials.
Okay, so for, for purposes of getting this on the floor, I need a motion and a second on the language as, as written currently in front of us. Okay, thank you. So we're now open for discussion or questions on the policy as written and as drafted in front of us currently. Mr. Cash.
I've got a question. Do we anticipate state law changing because of one court case that's going on in, did you say in our district, Dana?
Yes, sir. The court case, it, it does not, let me be clear, doesn't have anything to do with library books.
Right.
But yes, it is in the U.S. Middle District. It has been decided by Judge Crenshaw, and it is that decision that we are relying on when, when this language was drafted the last time that we updated this policy.
Well, when, when we pass laws, the legislation, when they pass laws, do they anticipate them changing like this? I don't know.
So I don't know that they anticipate them changing. As we have discussed previously, until or if a state statute is challenged, it's deemed to be constitutional. In the case that I'm talking about, there was another law that was challenged. The court found that law not to be constitutional. That is, that's why that case is important to us, is if at some point in time, the law is challenged and it's held not to be constitutional. We don't want any discretion. We want it clear in the policy that automatically we won't follow that provision. I will remind the board, and, and we may not have mentioned this Thursday night, there is not a case pending regarding this legislation in Williamson County. There is a recent case that the ACLU filed against Rutherford County's School District. So there is a potential challenge out there, but not for Williamson County.
So, so we know there's going to be challenges, but what this does is immediately, if there's a case against a library book, for instance, and it goes to litigation and everything, that automatically our policy is revoked.
Yes, sir.
That's exactly what it means?
If I may, Ms. Osbrook, is it the whole policy or that portion?
It would just be that portion. The definitions in A through G, it would be the, would be the portion, just those provisions, not the entire policy.
So, so basically, we're just going back to the old way of doing business as far as A through G?
Yes, sir. But only if it is struck down.
Well, we'll see what the board votes, but I can't vote for that. Thank you.
Mr. Galbert.
So Dan, I, so my perspective on this is we're, we came up with this language directly out of the state law. And so part of our, part of our desire to, like, so we, we could be sued from, from either side. We've been sued from, from either side of this argument. So in order to stay, in order to make sure that we win a lawsuit, which is, which is my first priority, so if we, if we are sued, like, I would, I don't want to pursue any litigation. Of course, we might not pursue it, but I don't want to go forward with anything unless we have a chance of winning. And if we, if we do get sued, then if we've got the state law as part of our policy, then, then the, then whoever, then the plaintiff is going to sue us and the state. And we're going to, one of our defenses is, hey, you can look at our policy, that's fine, but if we did this, and all we were doing is relying on the state law, then they're going to go to the state and hopefully get us free and clear. It's like, hey, go, go to the state. You want, you want attorney's fees if we, if we end up losing, like, talk to them. Like, so we, we're, we're not making any, any determination of the constitutionality or not of this law. But if it's ultimately, if, if Rutherford or somebody else, if they, if they say that it's unconstitutional, or if they, if, if some judge strikes it down, then what that would give us is, so it immediately comes out of our policy. And at our next meeting, then we can go and, and edit whatever they did, whatever that judge didn't like about it, then it, it just immediately comes off. Instead of taking a process or, or make it and say, well, we may go back and, like, it's just gone. And now we've got, we, you know, in two more months, we'll have the new revised wording based on whatever they're ruling. So it's not, I don't, I don't think it's going to be gone forever. It's just going to be gone in a way, we, more than likely, they're not going to strike down the whole thing. They're just going to put some, put some guardrails around it or what, like, who knows? They could strike down the whole thing. I don't know. But, so that's the, that's the purpose, is just to make sure. So if we, we can just protect ourselves and we just get it kind of on the auto delete track, and then we just have to finish it.
Ms. Clements?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually was planning on talking about something else, but since we've gone down this path, I was the one who, I understand the importance of this language. this path, I was the one who, I understand the importance of this language, especially after our discussion at the work session. I had just made it, the paragraph I suggested was, should these provisions be eliminated or expanded? You know, I wanted to add, not just eliminated, but also expanded, that no matter what, we would follow the state law. But at the end of the day, and at the work session, I realized that really this paragraph, and I apologize to my board members for bringing this up in the 11th hour, I just happened to notice because the red verb was in there and changed, and so, but at the end of the day, this paragraph doesn't change the functionality of this policy, and I think we've worked really hard on this policy. And so that was, so my apologies for bringing that up in the 11th hour that I noticed it. But again, I don't think this paragraph is going to change the functionality of this policy. So, but I also wanted to address, because I talked to you, Superintendent Golden, today, because I met with the Hunter's Bend librarian and really, oh, it's so fun, y'all need to go visit your elementary libraries, they're beautiful, I just had such a good time. And I apologize, I've had some family things going on, but I wanted you to reiterate what we talked about, the mature reading list and the language, because in the policy, it says mature materials list. Can you just kind of...
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. As we've been going through this policy with some board member recommendations for what's in the policy termed as mature reading list, we had multiple conversations with our librarians at different grade bands. One of the specific concerns that was raised in our discussions with our elementary librarians is what an ordinary person might think of when they hear mature reading list. And we shared that with you all at the policy committee, and the essence of what we talked about was what some adult outside the school system might think of as mature reading is not anywhere near what is in our elementary libraries. So we discussed making sure that we and our librarians had the capacity within the parameters of this policy draft to give different language that's more detailed and more accurate, a more accurate description of what content might be on a list for the, for this. Instead of just captioning something, mature reading list, we might put something that has a better descriptor for elementary. For example, there's not going to be profanity, that profanity in any of our elementary books that's described in the policy. So the key to it, from my perspective, is a reference back to that policy committee meeting where we shared that detail. Dana, I'm going to use the phrase I hear sometimes from practicing lawyers, legislative history, that gives us that capacity and discretion to give a better detailed description for parents, when, you know, when and if this board passes this policy.
Can I follow up with one question? I didn't know, I noticed my request to speak went off. And then, will, since we talked about having the mature materials list be cohesive district-wide, you know, for the elementary band and for the middle school band, where will, will parents be able to access that on the website? Where will that be compiled?
We will have it available for anybody to click on at any time, from school to school. Now, some schools have particular books and others don't have particular books, so those, I don't foresee that they will ever be exactly identical, but I know the board had some discussion about making sure our librarians talked about common books. So that, we expect to have that available for anyone. Another item that we talked about as we were brainstorming how to apply this is, again, from our conversations with our librarians, related to that question of opt-in versus opt-out. And our library leads shared with us that that was a key component of their concerns related to an earlier iteration of this draft. So our plan at this point is to have a notification, and we're working on the possibility of having a required sell in the enrollment process, where someone is not opting in or opting out, but just saying, yes, I understand, with some detail that we talked about already related to the content, yes, I want my child to have access, or no. And I'm going to add this, no matter what is in the policies, over and over again, our librarians emphasize the importance of conversations between parents and the librarians. They've talked about that constantly, because things can change for children from time to time. There might be, you know, they might have suffered a loss, for example, and they might need to have some more in-depth discussions with the professionals in the library. So I gave you a little bit more than your question, but I thought it was important to emphasize that.
Dr. Driggers?
My question has to do with the timeline. If we get a lawsuit and it goes to the Chancery Court, then it goes to the appellate court, and then it goes to the Tennessee State Supreme Court, what happens to our policy in the years that it takes for this to work up through the legal system?
I think that's either a Ms. Osbrook's or a Mr. Cook's question.
I mean, do we suspend it temporarily, waiting for a final?
If the legislation is held to be unconstitutional from the district level, it's unconstitutional until it's appealed. Okay, so you're, should it be held unconstitutional at district level, that language will be removed automatically, whatever is unconstitutional, and the rest of it will be, if it's able to, will be applicable, okay?
Okay.
And that will continue all the way through, all the way up to the Supreme Court, should it get there.
Oh, I'm finished, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to piggyback on Mr. Golden's comments. I think the most important thing we've discussed at policy meetings and work sessions regarding this policy is encouraging parents to reach out to librarians with their concerns. I agree with previous statements that parents know their children and their experiences best, so a direct conversation with our trained librarians is most helpful. For our parents, if you haven't spoken with your librarian yet, your teacher or principal can connect you. Direct conversations are most effective against distrust and misinformation. I will vote against this policy because the protection it could provide does not outweigh my concern with limiting access to books.
All right, any additional questions or comments? Mr. Beasley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for clarity, we have the individual that, if we do get into a lawsuit, that's going to step up and stand in the gap for us, our litigator, has sent an email that's recommending this policy as written. Is that what we're voting on now?
Yes.
And Mr. Golden, do you recommend approval of this policy?
I do recommend approval of this policy with two caveats. One, that our librarians have that professional judgment that we talked, that it's written into the policy, and we've talked about it policy committee, and two, that it contains that language in lines 21 through 25.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, any further questions or comments? All right, we will proceed to a vote on this policy on second reading.
The vote is eight yes, three no.
All right, the policy is approved. All good? All right, Item D, approval of 2024-25 teacher bonus from the state. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The state of Tennessee, through the legislative branch, passed a law that our teachers will get a $2,000 bonus. I want to give a little bit of detail. Number one, they don't have every detail worked out, that's my detail. Second, more specifically, the plan that the state has is to give a $2,000 bonus to this year's full-time teachers who are spending more than half of their time in direct instruction to students, fund it in next fiscal year's budget. So they will still be working on making sure that they have identified every single teacher who, based on the legislation, has a right to that, and we will be giving them uploaded information. We don't know exactly when the funding will come, but we know that it will be sometime after July 1st. So what that means is, we will have some retirees who will receive some funds in the next fiscal year, and new hires, for example, will not receive that. So I do recommend approval of this resolution, which is another required part of the process to allow the State Department of Education and the funding body to fund it once they identify all those individuals.
Thank you for that explanation and recommendation. We have a motion in a second, any discussion or questions? Mr. Welch?
Thank you. I'll be voting for this, just because our teachers deserve the bonus, that's rather clear, but for the record, I just want to state, this was an attempt at a bribe to get our teachers on board with vouchers, they wouldn't do it. So now it's blackmail. Either we have to sign off on this or our teachers don't get it, and it's just unfortunate that we have legislators that don't care about public education in the state, at the governor level and at the state legislature. I will be voting for it, just because I don't really see a, an alternative that doesn't shaft our teachers, which I'm not going to do. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Final comment, Mr. Chair. We are required by state law to have this in place by June in order to receive the funds.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Do recommend approval.
Thank you, we are ready to vote.
The vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Resolution is approved. Our final item on the agenda tonight is tenure recommendation of the superintendent to the school board. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We make this annual request of you based on the Tennessee tenure law. Starting in 2011, the Tennessee tenure law was changed from what many of us thought of as traditional tenure, which is you work for three years and you rehired, you're tenured, to a process by which teachers continue to be evaluated based on their state-based evaluations. And the key components of what constitutes tenure is actually in the memo that Vicki Hall, our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, included in there, and I won't share all that detail because it is in writing in the board packet. Do recommend approval of the Tennessee tenure recommendation law.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second, and Mr. Galberth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There is, there's an individual on this list that I can't bring myself to vote for, but I don't want to, I don't want to vote against the other individuals who I'm sure are qualified and worthy of moving forward with this tenure. So just wanted to explain my vote of, of, sorry, my abstention vote.
Any additional comments? Okay, with that explanation and recommendation, we are ready to vote.
The vote is 10 yes, 0 no, 1 abstain.
The recommendation is adopted, and that brings us to the end of our agenda. Thank you for everyone's participation, we are adjourned.